Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to the, and then we have a long special meeting tonight, today, so we'll, executive session, so we'll, we don't have a long agenda, so we'll try and get right through it. And my first selectmen's update's not that long. Quick COVID numbers, as of right now, we have 28 in Greenwich Hospital, four in the ICU, all on ventilators, and system-wide, we have 401. So, all those numbers are coming down dramatically, which is great, and we're seeing that all over the country, so. We will be, my take on it is probably just to keep everything where it is for the month of February, we're almost there. And probably, you know, next few weeks, you know, at the end of February, we'll be in a very different place, and March is looking much better. And we seem to be a little bit ahead of the rest of the country, but they're catching up, which is great. So we'll, we'll be adjusting policy and probably relaxing the mask mandate for town buildings. Obviously, we didn't do that for the private ones this time. And everything's going fine. So we'll, just keep your guard up still, but things are going in the right direction, so lots to look forward to in the coming weeks. Did the budget presentation the other night? We came in, the budget guidelines were 2.5, we came in at 2.4, expect that to come down a little bit when the BET's done with it. The capital's 80, we've given it 87 million, but I pointed out during the presentation that eight or nine million is going to be refunded in grants. And then that brings us to about 77, 78, and then the eight million I put back in, the budget for Western Middle School for the Fields, that can be pushed back to a later date. It's just to keep that on everybody's radar, so we're pretty much at, at the 70 million mark. And I'm sure that will come down a little bit, too. But I think they're all worthwhile projects. We really did focus on public safety. And there was a nice article in The Greenwich Time about the reaction in Old Greenwich. They really did their homework there, and they pointed out a need. And so we're, we've been focused on for the last few years, public safety, and that will continue, especially with people working from home, or we want them to get out of the house and not be in front of the computer all day, but we wanted to do so safely. So wherever we can get a bump out of sidewalk or crosswalk, we'll do that. Also clarification, because there's some, again, unfortunately misinformation out there again. And unfortunately, some RTM members are a part of that. The bump out at Arch Street is not costing a penny. It'll be, even though we appropriated money in the budget for it, it's going to be 100% grant-funded by West Cobb. Also adds at least three spaces. We're hoping for maybe more, but we think there's going to be three extra spaces. Nothing is taken away, not one space. It adds spaces. Alright, so what happened was, people were asking DPW, what about these other, what's your plan? It's exciting. We saw East Dale, and we see this. What's your plan for the rest of the Avenue? So when they did that, they started showing some ideas. Nothing is concrete, nothing's etched in stone, about what it would look like, say, a grig and faucet. And remember, a lot, some of that parking I take, got taken away is taken up by outdoor dining, and, you know, almost no one wants to take that away. So that's, and I think that's here to stay, and which is a good thing. But as we've said all along, and what we did two years ago, we want input and feedback. So Arch Street really is a, is a win-win-win. It's a no-brainer, but the other intersections and, and street corners, DPW, I met with them yesterday, they want to work with everybody, so they want to hear some ideas and see how they can help. I also want to, we're going to get some numbers today updated to let people know that the meter feeding that's been going on in Greenwich for decades, and that takes up a lot of spaces on Greenwich Avenue. It's, it's meter-feeding by people who work on the Avenue. And what we did last year is we opened up a couple hundred spaces in municipal lots. I think there's about 130 people, maybe more now, have taken advantage of it. So that's 130 spaces that have been opened up for, for people. No one talks about that. They, the people who were against the Bubba and Elm Street kept pointing to, well, there's, you know, three or four spaces being taken. They're not mentioning the fact that we opened up about 130, and it may be more than that now. But we're trying to see, we're going to continue, the reason why we only wanted to focus on this one bump out for this year is to give us even some more time to figure out how to get even more people off the Avenue to open it up for diners and shoppers. So this is a problem that's been going on, you know, since I was a little kid, and we're working at getting it, get, addressing it, so. That's all good, but I just wanted to get that clarification out there, because again, you saw, you know, I, I didn't see the whole thing, but at the end, I heard there was some people coming on and immediately taking out the budget-cutting knife and not having the proper information. So when you, but I've told people who had mentioned that they, you know, didn't want to see Arch Street because of the loss of parking, when I explained the situation, they completely changed their opinion and supported it. And I think we're going to be doing that every single day now until May, till we get this thing passed. So it's, it's a, it's part of our plan to keep our streets more beautiful, get them more beautiful, but to keep them safe. And so we'll, we'll continue on that. That's it for now, because I know we, we have a long day, so I'll turn it over to, to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred. Good morning, Janet, everyone. Thanks for the clarification, Fred, on what would be happening at Haven, Meyer, and Arch. I was getting some emails, too, so I think just people probably were looking at it in totality from what's possible or an idea stage versus what DPW actually wants to execute on. So thanks for clarifying that. We had our first reimagined Greenwich meeting of the calendar year on Monday. We've switched our meetings from Wednesdays to Mondays just to meet the majority of the committees, other commitments. We are going to focus, we reaffirmed our mission. Interestingly enough, in our mission, there was something about vehicular traffic, but it had to do with closing the Avenue for Dining. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're connected to the issues of parking, but it's not our mission necessarily to solve the parking issues as a singular committee, but we definitely are, you know, want to be part of the solution and have a point of view. We're going to focus on the Free Music Fridays again, the holiday stroll during the holidays, but we want to try to add something in the spring. So we're brainstorming some ideas and also brainstorming ideas to incorporate other business districts, not just Greenwich Avenue. So the committee's pretty excited about that. As it relates to snack, thanks for putting the plug into your community connections. Last Friday, we already received a flurry of nominations. And then Janet, you had the idea of, you know, focusing on some of the things that were actually have open spots. So the biggest group that we have an open spot is IWWA. So if anybody's interested in water courses and Waterway Agency, that's where we have an immediate need. If you recall, we expanded the snack committee by two members, so we have some good candidates that, you know, will be bringing forward to the entire Board of Selectmen to interview to fill those spots. So things are moving along pretty well there. And that's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Moving on to Janet. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning. Thank you, Fred. I'd like to begin my update with a teaser from the Sustainability Committee. As you may recall, the committee has been asked to produce a report twice a year that highlights its own activities, as well as the state of sustainability in town. The committee's second report is due out soon, and we invite you and the public to attend the next committee meeting on Thursday, February 3rd, at 11:00 a.m. to hear more about the report, which will be posted in time for our next Board of Selectmen's meeting. The Zoom link for the meeting is available on the town calendar. And tonight, at 7 o'clock, the League of Women Voters is hosting a Zoom webinar titled "State and Federal Voting Rights: What's Next?" To register for this free event, please go to L W V Greenwich.org. On a more serious note, the American Red Cross is experiencing a critical blood shortage. If you're able to donate, please do. My appointment is scheduled for February 7th at the YMCA. The Red Cross would also like our community to be aware that as temperatures dip, the risk of house fires rise. To address this, the Red Cross will provide and install home smoke detectors at no charge. To red, to register for this program, please go to www.rencross.org. And then, ending on a festive note, the Lunar New Year will be celebrated on February 1st. So happy year of the tiger to all.
Thank you so much, Janet, and thanks for all that great information to you both. Very important, so I'm sure everybody appreciates that. We do have, we do not have any old business, so we're going to go right into new business, and the first item up on the agenda is to amend the Neighbor to Neighbor lease at One Horse Neck and refer to P&amp;Z for M.I. And with us, we have our Town Administrator and COO, Ben Branyan, and Neighbor to Neighbor's Executive Director, Margaret Goldberg. Good morning, Ben. Good morning, Margaret.
Morning, all. The item before you, I think you have seen, back in January, we did an extension with an existing lease. So the item before you today is amendments to the current lease and, and MI. Because there is no current additional renewal terms in the lease, it requires a new process that requires both MI to P&amp;Z and RTM approval. But we are approaching it as an amendment to an existing lease, and if we can stick to our schedule of US approval, P&amp;Z in February, we can have an active lease per the RTM in March for an amendment to an existing lease. And both Abby Wadler and Alon Parma and Margaret Goldberg from Neighbor to Neighbor have reviewed the lease amendment, and we are happy to answer any questions before you, but we are looking for a motion for both amendment to the lease and referral to P&amp;Z for MI. Happy to answer any questions you may have. What's really driving this, as we said in the memo, is Neighbor to Neighbor is having some product and service delays with their construction. They just need additional time at one or two.
Okay, Ben, thank you so much. Margaret, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Hi, good morning, everyone. That pretty much sums it up. I would say we're just the living example of what everyone is reading about in the newspapers of late. So we appreciate any consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. I, I have no questions. I support the, the amendment here, but wanted to hear from, from Janet and Lauren on that.
As always, I'm just going to say thank you to Neighbor to Neighbor for all you do for our community.
Thank you.
No questions, and thank you as well.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, this is a first read. I'm okay voting on this now. I think we're, we're, you know, we haven't, we know what you're doing here and are supportive of it, so. Is there a motion to accept this and refer to P&amp;Z for MI?
Sorry.
I was just gonna say, I just have a process question. You said that this goes to the RTM, so we approve, but the RTM still has to approve as well?
No, I said P&amp;Z. Did I, if I said RTM, I apologize.
Because it's a lease, it requires, it starts with BOE, it requires an MI or municipal improvement, but the policy we have is all leases need to be presented to the RTM.
After, after?
It starts here, yeah, it starts here, and then we go through P&amp;Z, after P&amp;Z, and then it gets presented to the RTM.
And then I'm fine for going a second read.
So you got to not vote today and do it in two weeks?
No, I said I'm fine foregoing a second.
Oh, foregoing, foregoing, okay. All right. Okay.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we amend the Neighbor to Neighbor lease at One Horse Neck Lane and refer to Planning and Zoning Commission for Municipal Improvement status.
Second, I'm sorry, Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ben, and thanks, Margaret. Appreciate you coming on.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Second item we have is the Selectmen's Energy Management Advisory Committee, EMAC, their request for public school building representation for all building committees. And with us, we have EMAC's chairman, our friend Peter Schwanford. Peter, good morning to you.
Good morning. There I am, sorry.
Good morning. Good to see you, Peter.
The video off. Simply just to reiterate a formal request that we made. The EMAC was created, among other things, to make recommendations regarding suitability of target standards of energy efficiency for major facilitations in new construction. And that furthermore, we are a chartered to review, evaluate, and comment on capital improvement projects proposed, recommendations to the first selectmen. So if we're going to fulfill that charter, then we need to be involved with building projects on the outset, really from the inception, from the conception. Otherwise, we end up in a situation where we're, we're trying to be Monday morning quarterbacks and, and not able to essentially address fundamental design issues that arise. There is no focus on energy efficiency in the first place. So it's, it's a fairly simple request. I think we have a, a deep team. And I think that we, we will bring a very valuable lens and additional capabilities, professional capabilities to building process, as well as major renovations.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, having heard this at your meeting, you know, Jed was on it, too, totally supportive. I think this is getting in there on the ground and working together, so you're not coming in at the end of the game and, and, you know, trying to catch, play catch-up. So I think this makes all the sense in the world. And to see wherever and whenever we can get some energy, you know, efficiency into these projects, whether it be renovations or rebuilds or just builds, I think it makes all the sense in the world, very proactive. So fair, but my, my total support on that.
Perfect. And just to be clear, this would be not only municipal buildings, but it would be the Board of Education buildings. Central Middle School is coming up in the near future, and obviously, we've evolved with that.
Lauren?
Yeah, so my question, Peter, I, you and I exchanged email about it. The building committees for schools are defined, the composition of who's on it is defined in the charter, so mine's more of a process question. So the way we nominate, we actually nominate members of the building committees for schools is the three of us, and like I said, the composition is pretty defined in the charter. So how are we going to codify this or make sure that, you know, future boards of selectmen will also, you know, adhere to it? And then, like, things like the skating rink, Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, Fred, to my knowledge, Janet, to my knowledge, the Board of Selectmen didn't appoint people on those building committees. It was the first selectmen. So I, I just think we need to define the process and how we're going to codify this. Otherwise, you know, I'm totally supportive, but the way they're sort of created, selected, adopted, nominated, appointed differs.
I certainly can't answer that question, although I did ask Kathleen Stowe for some clarification. She said that the process on their side is that the superintendent requests from the Board of Selectmen a building committee, so.
And there's a charter on how, like, someone has to be on it from P&amp;Z, someone has to be on it from the BET, someone has to be on it, a liaison from the Board of Selectmen. So there's some definition as to who composes it. I'll try to find the charter number. I should have done that before I started speaking.
Happy to help, however we can, a little bit out of our jurisdiction, of course, but I think the sentiment is, is merely that we can be a valuable partner on any and all building committees.
Well, would you want to, I mean, I think we're all in favor of this, and we could vote on it now, but did you want to wait just till the next meeting to get clarification on that? So we know exactly what we're voting on? Would that be okay, Lauren?
Um, yeah, because I, I just want to make sure that this, this has teeth in it and that we actually have a process. So it's Town Code, Chapter 2, Article 9 governs the Appointment of School Building Committees, Section 2, you know, now I'll forward this on to whomever, Section 2-40A of Article 9. And it kind of defines, like, who's who. So I, I just want to make sure that this lives, you know? That, that, that's where I'm coming from.
I certainly support, you know, good process, and, you know, if it means, you know, waiting until the next meeting, that, that makes sense. And it sounds, it sounds like we would have to do two motions, though. One, one for BOE building committees and one for town building committees.
Yeah, thank you, Janet. And Peter, I, our town attorney is on here, too, Barbara Schellenberg. Maybe you could circle back with Barbara offline and with the Board of Ed just to, to get a line there. So this way, in two weeks, we come back, we will be able to vote, and we'll just have that clarity, so everybody's clear going forward, and as Lauren said, it has some teeth.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I was, I was actually thinking the same thing, Fred. So, yeah, let, let, let's schedule a time to talk, Peter.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you, Peter. So we'll see you in, in two weeks, and we'll get that ironed out, but thank you so much. And again, thanks.
Very good. My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going on to the last item here today. Actually, no, the, I'm sorry, second one. The Byram River flood mitigation report, and we have our friend Peter Alexander on with us, I believe. Is Peter on with us?
He should be joining you momentarily.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Peter, please unmute yourself. And you can turn on your video.
Good idea.
And you can turn on your video. Here we go.
Two for two. How about screen share?
Let's go. Good morning, Peter.
You got it.
By the way, I think the first thing I should say is, Janet, congratulations and welcome. I appreciate your volunteer work. I see behind Peter, it's already 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I kind of lost track of that. Just kidding. I bet you're going to be seriously busy. Was the screenshot able to be shared successfully?
We see a map there, but it's not that clear, and it's next to.
Yeah, do you have the, are you, are you showing it on your computer? You, I gave you co-host privileges. Are you going to share your screen? Okay, so you should be able to do that now.
It's usually down at the bottom.
Uh huh. So a green, there should be a green button that says, "Share Screen."
Yeah, that's what I've been looking for. Oh, boy. This is a O for twos, so far as bad.
That's okay. What, what type of device are you on? Are you on an iPad or a computer, PC? Um, so your, your window might be expanded so high that you can't see it. Maybe go up to the top and maximize your window, you know, click on the the large box on the top so that it takes over your whole screen, then you should be able to see the controls. I mean, do you see any controls at the bottom of your screen?
No, I don't, not any Zoom controls.
Okay, so look at the bottom, the very bottom of your, or actually move your mouse up to the top of your monitor. Do you see any controls come down there?
View. Host, view, speaker, gallery. Oh, sorry, guys, wasted.
You see share screen? Okay, that's okay. Um.
Screen. I usually, in the past, I had.
It's okay. Do you see a Zoom icon, like a little blue?
Yes.
Icon at the bottom. Click on that and see if it pops up.
Yeah.
At the very bottom. Does that pop something up for you?
Jenny, it's Megan. I hate to interrupt. I have to scroll my mouse over that area, and then it pops up.
Yeah, he tried that, but it doesn't seem to work.
I apologize.
You can try it again. No, 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 listen, this is whatever we can do to help. But do you see at the very, very bottom, like in your system tray? Or are you, are you on a Mac or a PC?
Oh, no, PC.
Okay, so at the bottom, you should see a little blue icon with the white camera on it, at the very, very bottom on your tray, your system tray?
Yeah, I, I always see it start video.
Yep. Well, that's start video, but right to the right of that, do you see a green button that says, "Share Screen"?
I'm afraid I don't.
Well, all I can think of is that your software isn't up, updated.
Yeah, it's, I did upgrade the software just yesterday.
You know, honestly, if you want to quickly email it to someone here, you know, I can share your screen. I can share the presentation, and you can speak.
He tried that last week, Jenny, and we could not access it. That's why we were asking for hard copies, Peter.
Yeah, I sent the.
We did not receive anything, unfortunately.
I sent them all to Barbara last week.
So if you want to just go ahead and just explain it, and then maybe you can come back at another date, but if you want to just explain it for a few minutes, because we have a, a long executive session ahead of us, so I just.
Again, I'm over two again. Yes, I have a really unusual opportunity, I think, that I've been, I paid my way through grad school, '74 to '77, cleaning up an oil spill on the St. Lawrence River. I've been involved in coastal operations of all kinds since then. Even Margaret Thatcher trusted me to do oil spill contingency plan for the British Isles. They, even the communists, as they were heading out, President Bush sent me over to look at the Danube River. And as I look out my window now, I'm looking at the Byram River. And I love it. I think it has great potential and everything, but something's just come up that, just a few weeks ago, which is, there's a new artificial intelligence system where you can sample the air, the water, and the soil that's been deposited underwater to test for pathogens and heavy metals and so forth. And I hope it works. I really believe it, or not, I really believe in technology. I was with Environmental Systems Research Institute and brought that to Connecticut about 20, 30 years ago now. And if this is real, it's terrific. And all I'm seeking, not your, any money or endorsement of any kind, but it just so happens that Den Lane, there's a couple of dens in town, but this is Den Lane over in the Pembroke section, has a portion of the town property that goes across a channel that is like at the bottom of a funnel, and it's pretty well clogged in right now and causes a lot of upstream flooding. I have a lot of calculations and so forth, but it almost doesn't matter if there are nasty things coming down the river. And the really exciting thing about the AI is that, let's say we find something bad. We can go upstream and upstream and upstream until we can pinpoint the source. Someone has problems with a septic tank or like the chemical that endangered the Osprey from a cleaning outfit up in Armok. I think this is, I'm used to sending samples in, and the EPA can check these samples as well. It takes two weeks to two months. This takes two seconds. And it just so happens that the end of Den Lane, besides owning, like, all the way across the river, we also have a sewer pump station there. And to make a long story short, I would like to be granted permission to do an experiment on Den Lane to see what the water quality is and if it merits more testing as we go upstream. It's a three to four hours. We can schedule it for mid-February would be best. I, around Valentine's Day, I love the town of Greenwich. Like, that would be appropriate, but we would, as I have in other cases, have mutual indemnification as a result of the finding. I don't want to get the town in trouble. I don't want to get us in trouble, but I'd like to find out if there is trouble there. So I'm really asking your permission to help me use part of the town. use part of the town property for four or five hours. See if this system works and then come back to you with the potential for the extremely useful use of not only the place we're testing, but upstream to successfully, carefully dredge till we have a significant more flood attenuation. And the other part of the PowerPoint that I hope you guys get a chance to look at later is we can use the clean material to improve the retention of stormwater in a number of locations. But to start with, here in the Pembroke Park area, in conjunction with Lion Farm and the Nature Conservancy has a slice across from Weaver Street that I really think, besides, since I'm Scottish, would be really, really inexpensive. And it would be in conjunction with the Army Corps of Engineers that I'm a big fan of. So I'd like to do a reality test only on town property and share the results as you decide to, from essentially the, I'm a licensed landscape architect in both New York and Connecticut. And I can share those results only with those that are essentially chosen by probably the Board of Selectmen. Okay, I'll be quiet.
All right. Thank you so much. You're asking for five hours, one day, access to the Den Road pump station. Just one day, is that, Peter, five hour, five, four, five hours?
Yeah, we won't even actually have to go on the pump station property. The reason it's exciting for me, yeah, that'd be great. But let's say there is something that we detect, we can call Amy or whoever's running the sewer plant and say, hey, we got some bad stuff going. Do you want to, should we send it over for a while? So you, just briefly, that's way in the future. Right now, it's just.
I agree. No, no, thank you. So I just want to get to the bottom of this. So maybe having, if you could send something to me and I will copy Megan and town attorney and DPW and Rich Feminella at Sewer, maybe that's something they can do with you. I just wanted to get Megan's thoughts real quickly on what Peter's proposing. And thank you, Peter, by the way, for proposing it. But Megan, your thoughts?
I hope it's true. It'd be fabulous if it is.
Thank you. Good morning. Just a question. Has Pat Sesto been made aware of this? Or Amy Seabird or any of the other people that might be involved in this process?
They'd be happy to join us. The Dr. Patel, the physician that is behind this whole operation, has joined the team as well as the contractor, JC, and surveyor and so forth. But we're not going to do any interruption whatsoever. We're going to just take some water out of the river and test it.
No, I, 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 Megan's asking is, have you contacted DPW in the past about this? Because, you know, they're going to have to be involved with this too, and I suggest the sewer department. So maybe what you could do is send this presentation along with just a brief note, saying what you told us today. I'll copy everybody, but I'll make sure that DPW and Sewer see it and that they respond to you ASAP.
I agree, Fred. I think, I think all involved should, should give their concerns or, you know, blessings, whatever, whatever it may be from each department. I know Barbara may have an issue with the mutual indemnification that was mentioned that's not done by the town. So there are a few things that, you know, but having the presentation will be helpful. And then we can make sure that, that all the people that need to be involved or that should have a say in what's going on, get a copy as well.
That would be great. Megan, thank you so much. So we'll also get our town attorney and that, just so everybody, you get that answer pretty quickly, whether it's a yes or a no, but you don't want it to be a slow no, right? You're going to be a yes or no quickly. So we'll, if you could send that to me later today, Peter, I'll get that over to everybody. And we'll, we'll get, get an answer on it. But I thank you because you really, you step up all the time. And I know you love that area and you've always given some great advice. And with your background, it's very, very helpful. So and.
Long Island Sound is one of the things that makes our town unique. And in the long run, if we can send cleaner water and the master plan that I've drawn for this part of the park is to bring the cranberries back to Pembroke because the Dutch, to fight scurvy, would come up here and buy cranberries from our incredible native population. And guess what they'd buy? It's, the name of the river is sort of a hint. But I, from the love of the town, I hope we could do this before Valentine's Day. And again, no cost to the town.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And if you bring the cranberries back, I'll buy a bushel from you. Send that to me later, Peter, and we'll get it out to everybody.
Thank you. Keep up the good work, yo.
Thank you, Peter. Much appreciated.
The best email I.
Fred dot Camillo at Granite C T dot org and a Camillo at Gmail. Both of those will work.
Okay, cool. I'll send you what we almost saw today.
Okay, thanks so much. Have a good one, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Megan, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, last item is the, to vote on the Citizens Police Advisory Committee.
We actually have a couple of things to vote on. That's one of them.
Okay.
All right, I just need to pull up my screen. Okay, so if we start with the Citizens Police Advisory Committee, and what I'm going to do is name the names based on their term expiration date. So Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve, or that we nominate, I mean, appoint, sorry. I motion that we appoint the following members to the Citizens Police Advisory Committee for a term ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Adriana Carrillo Harper, Angelica Arenas, Laverne Lord, Ron Caricella, and James Joyella.
Is there a second?
Sorry, Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
Okay, all those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint the following members to the Citizens Police Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. John Raven, Sandy Hornberg, and Wayne Keeney.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Lauren Raven, I motion that we appoint the following members to the Citizens Police Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Charles Zubek and Peter Bernstein.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
The next is I motion that we approve the nomination of Nat Pop to the Board of Parks and Recreation as a regular member for a term expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
And the last, I motion that we appoint two members, returning members in the Management Advisory Committee for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Robert Liftlander and Tony Turner.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you, Lauren, for doing that. No other business for today. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWigan, I second.
All those in favor? Fred Camillo's yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWigan, yes.
All righty, thanks, everybody. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, Barbara. Barbara Schellenberg, everybody there who helped us today. And have a great day and stay warm.
See you at eleven.
Get eleven.